Sorry, it wasn't recording. So I just started.
We've been talking about a couple of things. First of all, our trustees. There was a failure of communication to county offices and our new trustee and our two old trustees who were to be voted on didn't get added to the agenda.
They're on Thursday night.
They're going to be added hopefully if Ryan can change the.
Oh, it's it's on the agenda for Thursday night.
About to do.
It's on Thursday night's agenda.
Is it? Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
She's got four.
I haven't do anything, but it's on Thursday night's agenda.
Great, okay. We'll be voting.
Because it's Lauren, a third, a new, that to take places. It's on there.
Okay, so that's for Thursday night. And Manny and I will be there in case there's any questions from the commissioners on me of the three. So we've been talking about that. The other thing we've been talking about for us is the planetarium at Heritage High School. And we have doing some research on planetariums. Manny found there is one planetarium in a library in Tennessee or in the United States. And it's in Louisiana. And Anna has talked to them to see what's involved or what would be involved. And we're going to be having a meeting tomorrow at one o'clock at the high school to go through their planetarium and see what they have in a way of equipment. What's involved? How much it's going to cost? What they have put into it in the past. Talking to, and I don't know if you want to mention to what from Louisiana, but they have a school group, what, what's a week?
Yeah, well, they they offer showings every week. At school groups. Whenever they.
It's it's part of the curriculum for this for the parishes. I'm assuming. And so that's something that we'll look at for the for the future. But we are still looking into that. I think one of the one of the biggest drawbacks is we're going to have is how old is the equipment? And and actually be used here. And if you can speak on that, it'd be great.
So I have some insights for you. The equipment is called the Media Globe Two. It is a Linux based computer. I believe approximately 2005 running in Fedora operating system. It is two physical computers, one of which runs the planetarium software and the other acts as video card that takes what would normally be a square image and morphs it for projection on the hemispherical dome. There is a JVC liquid crystal projector that is approximately 1K resolute. And it's on a pedestal in the center and pointed upwards. It was operated probably for about five years. Probably therefore has about life left. But, you know, computers sitting may or may not. Time may not exactly stand still. The facilities. School systems facilities manager might be his title said that their IT people tried to boot the system and were unable to. However, the system is not. Likely you'll find in the planetarium either at the operator's position or at the office for the director. There's a user's manual, which is weird. I know I've seen it. But it turns out that I saw I'm part of a group that called themselves the Friends of the Heritage. Last or a member. I asked Bob R. if he would. I was saying to Bob, Bob, this is weird, this manual. Why do you have a copy of it? Meaning he's got a PDF files and he's explained to me he wrote it. I was shocked by that, but it turns out that so so Bob was allowed access in 2015, late 2015. He asked Rob Britton or I'm going to confuse the names of the principals. I think his name is Jake Jones for access and was granted access. Called a guy, learned about a guy who does a business supporting planetariums who emailed him a bunch of disjoint PDF files that were part of an operator's name. Bob assembled it as well as added some custom stuff for Heritage itself and created a PDF file. And he's printed a copy that I that is should be there somewhere. I have emailed a copy of that user's. In that manual is a startup procedure that if you don't follow, you're unlikely to this. You better be prepared to follow that procedure. By the way, I have seen it done. I'll be glad to help.
Are you available tomorrow at one o'clock?
I'm pretty sure.
Heritage High School.
Pretty sure.
You're in the front lobby.
So but your question is, what's the status quo? It has probably, assuming it has a 10 year lifespan, it's going to be got 10 years of good life.
From what I understand.
Mine.
Tell me if this.
You have math.
Correct. That the school board has now turned it over to the county. And so the county now is in full control over what happens to the equipment. So anyway, we're talking, we're still talking about that. And it'll be interesting to see what happens and what comes out of it. We also found out that Bay's Mountain in Kingsport has a has it as a planetarium also. And maybe Manny and I and Anna will take a field there and see what's going on up there.
So there is one here. That's where I'll be. Do they not want it?
It's in storage.
So the library is thinking they could take it to the planetarium.
We we have to see if we could actually operate it here.
Is is the is the user guide something that's available that I could maybe get?
So someone needs to shoot me in.
Okay, I'm curious. Thanks.
Do we have to have a dome ceiling in order to pick it up?
I think the the correct answer is yes. If you were to project it under this ceiling, we would get something that we could talk with and work with. But I would assume that the corners would not be in focus well and or the center would. It's optimized for, and we should call it a hemispherical. It's a hemispherical.
Okay, anyway, so that's what what I've been doing a couple of couple of weeks. Just kind of looking into this and the feasibility of it. Manny, you want to go?
Sure. So first thing I do want to bring up, and this is not in my report, that Secretary of State Trey Hardman will be at the library next Wednesday, eight o'clock in the morning. And they and Secretary of State will be using the check for the TOPS grant. Again, it's going to be at eight o'clock in the morning next Wednesday. I have alerted all the mayors, the commissioners, the council there for Alcoa and Merville, Nation, Friends, and obviously the Board of Trustees and the.
I was correct.
Sure. And Ajay, you may want to jump in on this. This is a grant that helps with computer classes or educational classes when it comes to computer services. Rightly, but.
That's that's essentially it. They want to, it's an initiative through state. Liz can help elaborate on this if I miss.
Training opportunities for the public.
There's digital navigation is now being included. They are allowing some hardware or equipment purposes. We didn't utilize either one of those this round. What we use it for specifically computer training and getting people in our with the use of digital services and the technology to connect them. And Jackie Taylor Tente is the guru behind all of it. She makes it happen. So.
Jackie will be here as well. I did get commitments from Mayor Mitchell, the dons there's on for Merville and City Manager Johnson for. And also Liz as well. Sorry. So if you have any time Wednesday, it's Wednesday, eight o'clock, I don't know how long it will be. Fifteen minutes.
You know, house calls part of this.
What is it now?
House calls part of this.
I don't know.
No, it's not Geek Squad.
Yeah, not Geek Squad. So that's that's exciting news. As far as youth services go, and I and I. Get you the exact.
I think we shared it when it came in. I want to say it's about sixteen. We're happy with that.
And we do it in part economic and community development. And so we received the funds with them and we provide them for all our libraries. They could have requested up to 20,000, I think is the max. Of a small match, local match that was the same as the ARCA grant, which was like 20% probably through marketing for a level five. And this year we added solar charging table as well as digital navigator project. And also some internal connections. Equipment, software, cable, things like that. That's all.
Lajana is looking that up. I'll continue with you. I say this every month, Chelsea Tarwater does such a phenomenal job. And I mean, she is just she's incredible when it comes to the programs this past summer. We just had a Tom Mason in the Blue Bucket here as a pirate band. Pirate Boot Camp as a picture of spooky seed as a pirate dressed as a pirate. We also had these monarch butterflies. Nesting or whatever the specific correct term is. And then following a storytime. Families are encouraged to see the butterflies go out and into the world. So and that was great because the kids would come and take a look at it.
Well, listen, last year, I remember they did the same thing last year and I have who they came to the library most empty. For their kids, just to check. And then while they were there, of course, they were checking out bugs.
It's big in life today.
Yeah. But they, yeah, it was amazing.
If anyone is a is a fan of Dungeons and Dragons, we have that going on as well. Or young adults or youth as well as adults. So if you're interested, Dungeons and Dragons are happening here at the library as well. One thing that Chelsea will include next month is we have another Lego display going on. And this time it correlates with the summer reading program. Feel potions, theme of ocean. So we'll see there's one, it's, I think, amazing where it's a shark. And actually, taking a bite of the book. But it's 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 amazing with the kids how they're able to build and create.
I like the container ship.
Yeah. And it's cute what they add. Somehow Batman's included in it. But the kids are just so proud of that. Over in Collection Services and Cynthia mentioned it, but there has been a ship with by orders being large print and Kathy Thompson has been steering that ship and doing a great job. And it takes time. Fudos for that. Over in Adult Services, we have a patron that several occasions donating money towards our genealogy. And with with the donation, the items are actually found and built together with the patron's name in a in a plaque, so to speak, at the front of each bound book. So we appreciate the patron's generosity towards the library and is acknowledged as well and better from adult services. Yes, it is. Yeah. Three, $300 Kathleen. It's $300. That was 500. I'm sorry, 500.
Done that twice.
He's done it twice. Check it out. And so back in the day, there used to be a library column called Check It Out. And it is now that. Check it out 2.0, I guess. And it's in daily time. So last week was our first edition or first publication of the new Check It Out. And it was done by one of our reference libraries. And she spoke about the wrote about the upcoming Hot Summer Nights program. And it's every two weeks. It's on Thursdays. On page three, I believe it was.
This week.
This week was, yeah, page three. And in in two weeks, Chelsea Tarwater will be writing an article and talking about some of the programs, including on July 29th, which is a Saturday. The 30th, 30th on Saturday is a waterfall, which includes a dung tank. So if any of you want to be part of the dung tank, it's left. It's over here, you know.
I think you two, great choices.
Oh, yeah. I can't swim, so I can't be part of that.
That's not an excuse.
We also had our all all ages chocolate. And in the report, you can see the winners. Over at Bookmark Cafe, we have a themed drink. It's Oscar's Sea Shanty. And it's a drink that was created by Chelsea. She's here right now, but Chelsea Medini as well as Ben Hall. And it's a colorful drink and little gummy octopus. So we're thinking of something for the Halloween as well, kind of. But it's basically an Italian soda. Bookmark Cafe also catered last week of June for Oak Ridge Computer Science Girls Camp. And it was held over at the Learning Lab. So we catered that for the week and they were pleased as much for that. And actually, the the camp came over a couple of times as well to the cafe. Cynthia mentioned already the patron service. We're ready to go with that, you know, they're all up and running. And you feel it's time for the public, they'd be more than happy to use it. There are some that will not use it. But it's there. You know, I'm one, if I go to brokers or Target, I like the self checkout. But there are some that do like the interaction. So inside the library here, I'm very social. Maybe outside, I'm a little like, I just want to get over. But that that's what it's there for those to feel at ease if they want to check the materials out. They can get that. So Cynthia mentioned the basically everything out here. Cynthia did some show with her presentation, including, and I'm glad Logan, you you mentioned that. Every month now, we're going to have this chart. So the number of new cards. Now, last month, for the month of May, we had 358 cards. The month of June is 506. And I do believe that this month we're going to be topping there are very close to that. And then breaking it down, seeing where these cards are coming from. Again, Glunt County Adult is by far number one, followed by Merville as well. And then Glunt County Juvenile. So we're going to keep everyone in the loop with that because it's, I think, that's very vital important when it comes to funding.
Can you do it for existing programs? As well, because.
We can. Oh, yeah. We but that we can do. I'm not going to, we're not going to have at the presentation finance. See, this is where we are. Yeah. This, we're trying to get everyone and understand how many new cards we're getting and how busy. Yeah, yeah, that will be part of it. And we can break it down like that by city and town. PR has been, again, bringing up, I brought up Check It Out. Handling all the social media and there has been a lot of social science promoting the new hours, new reserves on website. So they've been constantly working on this as well. They've been constantly working hard at that. No, then my update. Our budget was approved by the great, yeah, that's always great to hear. I did attend a, I did go to a co-regional and attended a discussion around discussion based on the standards, public library survey. It's something every single year. It looked and the software was the exact same software. For that part was pretty easy and the questions were very similar. So I really didn't have that much difficulty. It was pretty much cut and dried there. So I had done that. Amanda, in Youth Services and myself, we were guest speakers at Merville Juanes last month. And we will be guest speakers at Muro Alcoa Coanis on Thursday. So we'll be be there speaking about the new services that we have. We also met with Parks and Rec, Andy, Anna and myself. I met regarding the Sports Hall of Fame, Glunt County School. While trying to rejuvenate right now. And we have some ideas, like maybe a touchscreen or something. Pretty neat with that. The partnership had reached out to me. They're looking to do a whole event on the bridge that leads from downtown to the library and they asked if you know, if that's okay with the library, which be one and happy with which have been very generous to us. So and anyway, we can be a part of that program. I don't know the the exact details about it yet. Grateful to be part of that. We also have a Pelacifi Community College. So they're working Appalachian program and the library wants to be involved in that. So we're looking at, I think it was the Kathleen and on our end, maybe doing the concert with Appalachian music. It'd be kind of neat. Anna did a great job. So the entire finance department came. They wanted a tour of the library. They hadn't, the finance director has kind of just been in to go to my office. But he hasn't seen the the whole building, including the basement. So on Friday afternoon, Anna gave a tour to finance. They were hap- very happy about that. Anna, Beth and Savannah were also part of, there was a young professionals program or event held at the partnership. And I guess it's a monthly program.
They do something for you.
Yeah. So I think that would be great for, and I want to include AJ as very vital, just in meeting new colleagues and just forcing with others when it comes to that. Because I had that opportunity when I was young once. So I wanted to push that up to the middle age professionals. We do have some new staff, three new part time in Youth Services. Now, we welcome Jenny, Masha and Summer to our to our library. Next month, there'll be some more news about new additions. As far as the the projects and Ajay, if you also want to step in at this point, I was not here pre-bid conference came for the new. Ajay was there. You want to hear about a little?
Um, sorry. Now, the um, the TOPS grant that was awarded this year, that it's um, okay, so Manny asked uh, pre roof or the pre bid, pre bidding roof meeting. What is it? Prissaro was there. Teresa Ward Finance Department, shoot. Teresa Johnson. Yes. This one, you know, it's obviously got a quizzical brow. Hold on. Yes. Teresa Johnson from Finance. What is it? Denny, I don't know Denny's. Denny Garner was there. And we had a, we had four vendors turn out. We had gentlemen from Aspen Contracting, Radco Roofing, Escola Roofing, Henley Roofing and Teresa reached out and asked if we could have another pre bid vendor. And that'll be tomorrow at nine. It's not going to be anything as going to come, show the building. They're going to take them up on the roof. And that's what it consisted of. They were able to ask questions of Prissaro in terms of, can I just say, building stuff? And what is it? Teresa and Chris and Denny were all impressed that we have something out. So.
Believe me, it's incredible to have five companies wanting to bid on our roofing budget, especially at this time. It's amazing with what's going on. So that's great. That's great for us.
If we like prices, this is another.
Yeah.
I think it's going to be surprising.
As far as the projects update, next month we'll have more. The Book Drop Automation Project as well as freight elevator and the downstairs washrooms. We met with Prissaro today. Andy was there and Ajay as well, Don Stallions as well to discuss that. So we'll have further discussion next month.
We're trying to settle down on exactly what we what we want and put a timeline, timeline to it and also dollars so that we can come to the foundation. Allegable reports. Things are changing so fast and some of the, as Ajay said today in the meeting, some some of the things, even in the Book Drop, which we just started talking about, have changed dramatically. Is the financial report? I'm sorry.
The financial.
Yeah.
I saw Ajay and Anna.
So we just ended the year.
In spirit, the year will be closed and completed and sealed in October. It takes, so now we've got to go through the audit process. The things are still going to be trickling in, but now we're getting our house in order or the county is. But there should be very little changes, like, you know, there might be a few dollars here and there, but nothing substantial.
So the end of the year, obviously.
Okay, so it depends on how you keep costs in negative because both of those are true. Finance. Okay, so if you, like we did Gangbusters on library generated and that, we we started the year off with the protection, with the projection of we're saying we're going to make, we're going to bring in our $700. By mid-year, we up that estimate to 135,000 $50. And what we actually ended up pulling in as of what they had printed the risk, the report, which was, I have it written down, I think it was July. Yeah. It's a, so here's the thing. I can run a report July 5th and get a different, get a, it depends on what's going through journal. We closed it out and I did the report for June 30th. And I waited 11 days and reran the report to try to capture as much as there could be some activity, but it shouldn't be significant.
Just just.
So we brought in $140,611. Sorry, $140,611.42 as library generated income. If you look across the top, that trickles from, so we started the year saying we were going to bring in 2.5 million. We estimate or Uh, we estimate or. Two million, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. Since by mid-year, we bumped that up to. Two million, five hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars. Since at the end of the year, according to this report, we had two million, six hundred and two thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and.
Slightly higher than predicted.
We, uh, slightly higher, thirty-eight thousand dollars higher. For a library, I would say that is significant. Please do not compare it to anything else, for a library, that is. Funny though.
I'm just curious, uh. So say we got forty grand, forty grand over. Where did that money go? Does it go back into our pot or is that?
It goes into our fund.
To roll over for next year.
Yeah, it goes into our fund and that fund is allowed for capital, essentially.
So, so that forty grand goes into whatever the.
The special library fund is its.
Foundation. Probably.
No. Special library fund is a fund by law that the. And that's where it went.
And can only be used for capital.
Yes.
Yes.
There might be, but mainly, you know, mainly.
Cause we have one for the school system. Which is a tricky life.
So if they do a good job, we don't lose that money. That money is still out there for.
I mean, they've done a good job. We have way down. Oh, what, so as, as, as five thousand dollars that we have in the kitty. For capital, depending what foundation.
No, foundation has nothing to do with.
Foundation is funding most of our capital.
So that could be a different credit capital.
Yeah.
They're not funding the roof. Roof is funded by the county and, well, the county and any, and everybody who lives in county is funding the roof, that's.
So our special library fund will go towards that capital.
That will have, that will go to the roof, because that's all. It is most of everything.
But it's not like it'll be wiped out, they have percentages, they have all. Freight read, the audit is done annually.
Say you didn't do as well and you came with zero balance, okay, uh, everything bounced out. Now the roof, who pays for the roof?
County.
Yeah.
So, so we're just helping the county out, we got some.
Sort of, uh, they don't necessarily take all.
No, they, I know they don't see that. Guys don't see that.
No, but I mean, they don't take all of the money and they say, okay, there's forty thousand dollars, we'll just throw that into the. To the kitty and that'll pay for it. They can't take it all.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand what's.
Now, the foundation, they can't touch that money, that has nothing to do library or the county, foundation's private.
Right, right, okay, okay.
And every, everything we raise separately. We want to give it to the foundation because we can't have it, because if we, goes to us, then they could spend.
So man.
The county could spend moving forward.
Yeah. Ajay did a great job.
Yeah.
Now it's on me.
I just wanted to thank you for that, but that I think is Chelsea.
Yeah, that is true.
Having that focus.
Thought, so can we, can we, can we say? That particular, uh, money generated the capital. Because, you know, when we first started talking about the capital, we had a lot. The viability.
So there was a lot of it, it had to do with the projections that were being made at that time and how. How, how, how well balanced they were. They were to be achieved. That has fallen more in line, the actual numbers that are hit. As well as we have someone who has focused attention and training for that area running.
If you look on the budget too and you look at how much she has actually. To generate what she's generated, it's, it's an incredible figure.
It really is.
In the, in the future, her budget needs to be raised. And as well as other areas in the library. That's not going to happen this next year. Because we're still, uh, we're now going into the third year of our three-year budget. And this will be the end of that budget probably. Then the staff has to come up with a brand new big budget.
So you know how I said there's a balance on both sides? Liz, um, shares in her reports that targets have to be reached for. We did not reach our MOU spend. And that is in the figures you'll see. In the narrative. We were two hundred. Well, between what we said we were going to do from our mid. To our balance, our, our total expenditures are expenditures to date, two point one eight two one one four. Okay, our, um, MOE is something like two, four, one, three and change.
Three, four, six, seven, seven, thirty-two. Forever, sorry, county ends, yeah.
And, um, what is it, so this year we. I a letter explaining why it's in that and it's reduction in hours and, um, not having, um. Leadership, um, and so, yeah, so.
Yeah, you have seven months where you do have direct.
That's exactly.
So, yeah, we, we'll talk about that, we can.
So you'll see all that when we get to.
Like, if your expenses are lower.
Everything goes back into that special fund. Nothing disappears, it goes into our.
Don't lose that. To a special fund.
Wait, what'd you say?
Well, you all get to keep it in your fund balance, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Some other places you just lose it, go back. So that's okay?
Yeah.
That's good.
And so what are the limitations, which can that?
Capital.
That's the second.
It's always because of that. Okay, that's. Because most libraries in communities don't have that.
It doesn't have special funds. It depends on counties and charters and all.
That's good, thank you.
Good job.
So forty thousand plus about two hundred thousand. About two hundred and seventy of the special funding from this year.
I will find out by the end of. This is the first time it's ever happened. Ever that I've ever been in the finance side of library life. So I will find out exactly where it happens.
Hey, Angela is not here again.
She is.
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, everyone, how are you? Can you hear me? Would you like to see my lovely face? Here it is.
See her, but we can't hear you.
We cannot hear you, Angela.
Okay, let me try again.
It's very echoey.
Okay, that's going through my headset. Um. Would you like me to text my report instead?
It sounds like you're in a deep hole.
She's asking.
Yeah.
I think it's, uh. Little speed boost. She's typing.
Precious.
Okay, Angela, do you have a report?
I don't.
Oh, that's it?
It did not be. We continue to work with the visiting team.
Foundation grant projects, does anyone have questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank.
Thank you, Angela.
Okay, and we have a, a new member. Dee Barham is the new president of the Friends and welcome Dee.
Thank you. Uh, I wrote down, you know, a few little notes to. They put great first month and then I realized. Uh, but I've been meeting with all of the board members for. For the Friends board. To talk to them about expectations, uh, mine, yours, mine and ours. And, um, to. Generate some ideas, uh, and actions that we can take to be proactive. As well as getting organized, uh, where we are now. Um, we've created a beer truck and our beer truck, uh, binder is, um. If, if you get hit by a beer truck today, who can do? Do we have all of our procedures written down? And, and that's where we're finding.
I'm disappointed.
Andy was excited about that.
Well, we're finding a lot of gaps. Uh, that email will. And the password is, oh, I don't. So, um, finding those gaps and, and trying to collect everything into. And then, uh, we've been upgrading a few of our equipment downstairs, we got a. In eBay and I'll talk about that, well, actually I could talk about. So, um, Diane Rocco, who won the, um. Um, was asked to take the lead on. On how we do online sales. Um, and we have created the first video, uh, called, uh, doing our paperback lots where we sell. You know, a box of fifteen paperbacks by a particular. Or a particular genre. Um, and, uh, they have, uh, taking it in their. And they'd like to actually take it national to, um, get to other libraries and show them how we can possibly make, you know, eight to ten. So, um, we actually have our second, uh, training or second video. It's, uh, my area and we wrote all the procedures. To, uh, to move that forward as well. So it's, it's really, uh, eBay is just. We got a mentor, once we passed a hundred thousand. eBay assigned a mentor to us on how to increase sales. And so, um, we meet with him monthly and that's been really, really effective. So. Um, Thursday, the twenty-first, this Thursday, we're having a pop-up sale. Yeah, on one day. Uh, we had an ad in the paper, we contacted some of the. We contacted a bunch of homeschool, uh, agencies. Um, we've been putting it out, you know, on the social media site. So, uh, we're, we're hoping to have a good turnout. Um, as many of you know, we have a temper mental. Um, so I am looking for some elevator operator. For the, um, for the sale, we'd like to have somebody the first couple of days, a couple of hours. Because, uh, people hit the doors and once you hit. That's it for the elevator.
What time is the sale?
The sale starts at twelve noon and we're until seven. People that are gonna.
So Andy does, he, he has to get a certificate as well.
Later on, later on, yeah. I signed my husband up to.
And we're.
Drive a beer truck.
Oh, he, he'd like to drive the beer truck.
We'll have to line that up. Um, so, uh, tomato jam. We will, uh, we're trying to not to sell, but we're going to. Uh, some children's books, we get a lot of imagination, uh, library, imagination library donated to us. And so we can't sell those, that's the problem. And, uh, we'll give those away as well as, uh. Flyers, here's, here's one our sales, the rest of our sales. Oh, and then I am. Going to miss next month meeting, I will be cruising around Iceland and Greenland. And I'm sorry, there's just not really good Zoom reception. So, um, I will send this up.
Thank you very much and again, thank you to the Friends, they're incredible, Jeff. They're just truly amazing. If you haven't been downstairs, go downstairs and look around.
Yeah, call me for a tour.
Always changing. Okay, Liz.
Well, I have train tickets for Manny and also, um, so we talked a bit about the. For competency trainings for library staff that we have put together the twenty-eight log. Back to complete, you all had some that did that last year, but you have additional ones, kudos. Are on it to get this done. Um, so I have certificates and pens as well for, uh, AJ. For Linda, Kirby, AJ Rowe, she would be cup. Brandon LaFleur. Um. And Melinda Rest, so kudos to them for getting all that. Great, that's really great, you guys are all well. Um, handed out a new updated first page. Um, let me hold out for it. Um, the first page from what I sent out, because it's not, first after I put the word back together, we got an updated date for the trusty workshops. Um, so that's the only thing that's different. Uh, is not going to be in September, the one closest to us will be October. At the Arts. Um, I'm sorry, I feel like I gave you all one million pieces of paper, but we wanted to make sure everybody had a copy of our training. Um, this is a big part of what we do and requirements, we have specific requirements for all staff at every level. On each of our libraries that they, um, complete a certain number of professional development hours. And of course, in turn, we are required to provide some of those opportunities. So, uh, I wanted to put together our entire calendar, um, for everybody to be able to see. Um, this is the approved training plan, we worked on this for a long time and we, uh, use evaluation feedback as well. To try and put together the, the best training that we, that you all want and need. Um, that our member libraries want. So, um, we think we got a pretty good lineup, um, we kick off our, um, training season, uh, in August. Uh, with the Public Library Innovative Exchange and Keisha Parks, who is. For that, well, she also is, uh, the children's, well, I said children's library and she does so much, all the things you all know, like we were. I've just untitled some. Um, and she is at Cleveland, she will be. So. Um, otherwise, I also then, maybe I get on the previous page to this, um, the guidelines that we have for our training. They frequently ask questions about that, so that kind of gets you a little bit of idea about what we require, um, for regional services. Um, again, let's see, we have our big news, we have a new state library director coming to us. Amy James Rigger, um, is coming from Maine where he was the director of. The state library, then the state librarian. Um, prior to that, he was the deputy director at the Camden Public Library. Um, and he currently serves on the Board of Trustees for COSLA. Um, and he currently serves on the Board of Trustees for COSLA, which is the chief's office, chief officers of state library agencies. Um, and he will be beginning, um, about the third week of July with us, so we're excited to welcome our new state librarian.
Tell him to bring lobster.
Bring lobster. I won't tell. Um, Manny mentioned the English. I've got done, thank you very much, um, why that looked familiar, so, you know, that's always good, always. Um, our next deadline, uh, was tech grant, uh, was for tech grant, July seventeenth. Um, and then now we have a new Title VI that has now in all of our libraries, you can see Title VI, receive federal funds through our office in the form of um, funding that they can spend against materials. Like, at all our libraries, and so because of that, they have to comply with Title VI and receive training and, um, upload a certi- certification form. Um, they can do online survey, so that is July. I'm not throwing all these, it's not me making the summer deadlines, I know you all have busy summer. Um, let's see, who else? Uh, Friends Tennessee Libraries. Y'all are probably working with them to show them how to teach everybody. Um, we, I have a flyer in the back for them, uh, because we recently got to speak with their executive president uh, and talk about all the really great things for members. Uh, we want to do a feedback.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's mainly it, for the sake of brevity, we had quite a bit that I sent.
Anything happening around the state?
Pretty much business as usual, aside from our new state librarian and all, that's kind of our big news, and then top grant check presentation last week at Telford Village, the library Telford Village. So.
Is he going around the state doing this?
Yes.
Right. How did we get picked?
I do not know. And I have a feeling that's that's a big deal.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions, Liz?
So are we back to standard, no, no, fictions, et cetera? Library library from the state?
Um.
With COVID? No, pretty much.
No restriction, oh, no, I mean, we didn't have really restrictions per se here. Um, I mean, has, you mean like for MOE, for hours and all that stuff? Right, so, I mean, that, as far as I know, the caveat continues to have to close for COVID, that's acceptable. Um, because we've had some, I mean, we have some libraries that, you know, in different pockets, different communities have cases that skyrocket, and we happen to have lots of staff, yeah, lots of staff out, I mean, we have libraries that have like two and three staff members. All of them get COVID, and they have to close, so they can quarantine, and then they move them there. Better. So it just kind of, we're going with the flow. Everybody's going with the flow.
And we haven't any, any, uh, staff would come down with COVID?
Yes.
We've had a not just our department, I know other departments in the county, kind of.
Everybody who travels.
Happens.
And I have arrived, we're on vacation.
Yeah, just got my.
Seems like it's been hitting a lot lately. Community.
Fortunately, it's mild.
Okay, any other questions for Liz? Thank you, Liz. Our whole business, we've kind of already gone through this, the whole business. Uh, your business, we have, uh, this Thursday, we will be renewing our two trustees and then adding a third, we hope. And so that new, new one was, that could bring up his or her name until it's voted on, and and they accept it, we don't even know if they've accepted that yet or not, but, uh, and then we'll go.
Excepted before they get numb.
Hopefully. The the question that I gave the commission was, have you talked to them? And and I said, yes, I have talked to them, have you talked? So that they wanted, and the answer was, well, no, not yet. So we don't know. So we don't know what was to happen with happening last. But we should see. Okay, the last thing, uh, quote, next last thing, is there was the the selection and weeding of library materials policy? Has everybody had a chance to look at it? Look at the new versions of it, and are there any questions or comments on any of the new portions? And do you want to talk about this today, or do you want to hold it off until next month?
And and we will not vote on it this evening, this will be voted on in August. I do want to thank Kathy Thompson, Ajane, Anna, myself, not me. We thank them, um, but we all worked out on this together, and you'll notice the the new proposal has a base look to it, and has a lot of meat to it, and I actually, me being me, I was still a dear of a policy. Would like to add a few things on, yeah. So we will hold with the board, if there's ever an issue, so.
Took out a lot of you.
Uh, I I thought this was very well. My 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 question to you is, have you been faced with having to address such a year, maybe?
Yes. I have, yes, in previous, yes, every place I've been director, including here, yeah.
And I would like to know what now you've been.
Sure.
And it's not necessarily here.
Yeah, we can do it, yeah, yeah. And I think with this new policy, it will previous policy was done. Was, and this is a policy that is constantly changing, obviously a very hot topic when it comes to public libraries. Twenty thirteen, so it's been almost ten years since this policy has been.
A couple of questions for you, Liz, the policy that we're looking at now, is it comparable or commensurate with what the region and what we do at the state?
Yeah, so I I have, we're in a good position to have access to copies of different policies all across the state. Um, we all pretty much use for materials form, um, we just want to set forth, you know, clear procedures so that everybody knows anything happens applied in all situations, the same way, and follow the policy. Um, that way, everybody knows what they're supposed to.
Well, it seems like some of it we subject. I'd like it would be hard.
Okay, so any other discussion on this? We'll talk about this again next next month.
Yeah, next month, there'll be.
Talk about how we're going to vote on it.
So next month, we'll vote on, but if you want to have a discussion now, because next month, we're gonna have another policy, it will be uh, selection, use, and weeding local history slash archives collection policy, that'll be presented next month for discussion, and we'll be voting in September. So we're gonna be doing this every month is we're gonna have.
I do like this better, you know, you giving it to us this month, letting us read it and study it and go back through it and not vote. I do, because I don't feel so rushed.
Yeah.
You know, to have to devour it, because I like to read stuff every time before I.
It's a long.
And this is a, you're gonna see other policies that are very, are much shorter than this one, there's a lot up to this, and there, it should be.
Is that okay?
Good job.
Hold off. Okay, good. All right, I know, and I lost mine, but I I I asked Anna, eh, oh, well, let let me back.
You want lines?
Yes, please, thank you. The, um, the county personnel department asked that we do a review of Manny. I mean, uh, before the end of the year, the year ended June, so Stephanie and I got together with three or four members of the library staff, and we did a review on Manny, and then presented it to him, and then went over it with the personnel department. They have a copy, and Manny has a copy, and it was terrible. It was a very, very strong report, very positive, and, uh, if any of you would like to see a copy of it, or, okay, I will share it. I'll I'll share it to you all personally, I'll I'll take your notes as well, so you can, so you can see it. And from that, uh, we also asked the staff if there are things that they would like like to do differently, and also things that we needed to do. One of the things was a list of telephone numbers, and you know, all of the the people in charge and who was in charge first. So, so if there is anything that you need or there's an emergency, the first person is Danny, the third person is Anna, and and those are the numbers that you call. Two of those are other, well, three of those are their work numbers, and they will provide you with their outside numbers if you don't have them. And so that's, that's the call list for the, for the alarms and for any emergency.
Oh, that's a great list. Could could you put the departments of those?
Um, you know, what their position is.
Yeah, that would probably be great.
Okay, so that was, that was one of the things. The the other thing was, how can we, what can we do to acknowledge the employees? And how can the the trustees, what what can the trustees do to say thank you to the employees here in the library?
Well, okay, I've been thinking about this all week.
Okay.
Okay, so Friday morning, since I have to go back to work next week, I'm delivering donuts to you all, so I will have them here by, from me personally, because I, let me tell you something. I have not stepped in this library in many but now I'm here all the time, or I'm on maybe, and I just, while we were talking, established my with my library card, and I've got two books on reserve, so y'all be looking for my books that I want. I have read eighteen books this summer.
Did you have a book on summer reading?
I've filled them out, I've turned them all in. I just turned another one in tonight. So I just, I if I go back to work. So Friday, I will be because I'll be coming to the book sale too. So maybe I'll just kill. Maybe Thursday. So, but I do appreciate you all being.
Thank you, so think about that for for the future, whatever. Okay, any any other business? Do I have a motion for adjournment? Second. Anybody who moves to adjourn.
Sorry, it's gotta be a forty.
We did.